So it's an update on the City of Coachella Short Term Rental Program.
Yeah, thank you Chair.
Go ahead.
Gabriel Betis, Development Service Director. So we do have an update on the short term rental program. This is an item that the Plan Commission was interested in hearing. We also have some staff present that have been part of a task force to start looking at the short term rental ordinance for the city. And so I would like to introduce Miguel Navarrete, who used to be on the Plan Commission and is now working with us as an intern. So he's gonna assist in the first part of this presentation, so, thank you. If we can bring the PowerPoint up?
All right.
Welcome here.
Hi, thank you guys for being here. Thanks for the introduction, Gabe, Chair and fellow Commissioners. So because of your guys' questions, we went ahead and created a task force led by our City Manager in order to look at our surrounding cities' short term rental regulations. All right, to begin with, our short term rental regulation was adopted in 2017. The regulation was put in place in order to mitigate adverse effects in our communities. And the regulation also made sure that we collect taxes. Secondly, currently, we have 318 rentals within the city, and we are collecting $821,386 from our transit occupancy tax that is set at 9%. We are here today because, like I stated in the beginning, you guys wanted to know a little bit more about our short term rental regulations and how we compare it with other cities. All right, so a short term rental is a dwelling unit that is rented out no more than 30 days and that is paid for. Secondly, we have a local contact person in all surrounding cities. This local contact person is someone who's gonna be on the property within 45 minutes or is able to be reached via cellphone in under 15. And then if somebody were want, were to get a permit from the City of Coachella, these are gonna be the requirements listed up above. So first and foremost, we're gonna have our owner's information. Then we're gonna need an agent or representative details. So this is if someone is renting their short term rental through a management company, things of that nature. Third, we're gonna have our local contact person, so someone, like I stated, who could be reached at all times and could be on the presence of the property within 45 minutes and take a phone call in 15. Then we had to verify if they're responsive, so this is just making sure that their phone numbers works and we could go ahead and contact them. Then we need the property details and a nuisance plan. The plan is set in place in case anything comes about in terms of complaints. Afterwards, they need a business license, and the business license is set at $184. And then we need some additional information if required by administration. Last but not least, typically, people would pay an application fee, however, for the City of Coachella, we do waive that fee currently. Then this table is to showcase our short term rental permit fee comparison with cities and Riverside County. Highlighted in red is gonna be our fee. So like I stated before, our short term rental permit fee is waived, however, in order to get the permit, you do need to pay the $184 for our business license. Then, if you look around, some cities do have tiered systems. So these are for people who own their homes and then rent it out, and also for people who are, who have secondary homes and then are renting out in that case. We do have one of the lowest fees in the city outside of Palm Desert, which charges only $29. And these are some of our regulations. So we gotta make sure that our noise, the noise complaints are in line with our noise ordinance. Then we need to make sure that we have a local contact person. You've seen this three times already, it's very important that we have someone on site. Then we need a primary occupant who is over the age of 21 and could be reached at all times via cellphone. And last but not least, we have our max occupancy, which is a maximum of two persons with each rental plus an additional two persons per bedroom. Okay, and then we gave you guys a table with all of our regulation comparisons. It's really long, it's probably nine by 11, the sheets, so if you guys wanna take a look at that. But out of all that data, we broke it down to three main compartments where we have the City of Coachella. We don't have any limitations on short term rentals, like surrounding cities, some of them cap them out per neighborhood, some of them have it zoned, we don't have neither. Then, we don't have any permit fees. Like I stated, we only charge $184 for their business license. And last but not least, we don't have any short term rental parking regulations. So I've, I've noticed that other cities do have where you can only park either via on their driveway or have cars per parking, oh, I'm sorry, cars per bedroom in the house. All right, and in terms of what our code enforcement does with our short term rentals, they're there to aid in any complaints that the city receives. And from now, from this point forward, I'm gonna go ahead and pass it over to Gabe. Thank you guys for sticking with me, and it's been a pleasure, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Miguel. Before I go on, I just wanna acknowledge some of the staff that are part of implementing the short term rental regulations. So we have our Economic Development Director, Selena Jimenez. Then we also have Cesar Lucrecio, who is responsible for processing the short term rental permits in the city and monitoring those. And we also have Renee Rosales to my left, that is our code enforcement manager. But we also have the rest of the team that are part of the task force, which include building official, Lisandro Diaz, we also have management analyst, Anaye Fernandez, and then we have our planner, Adrian Moreno. So just wanna acknowledge them. So we, we also wanted to look at the data with respect to our short term rentals in the city and what that looks like, right? A lot of times, it's, we really need to plan based on data and what the data shows us. So if you were to look at a map of the city and plot all the short term rentals, you can kinda see the pattern that's going on in the city. A lot of those short term rentals, the 318 that we talked about, are concentrated more on the west side of the city. And a lot of that concentration is in the newer developments. So, so we're seeing in the new developments, the west side of the city, and part of that reason could also be that that's an area that's closest to the Coachella Music Festival grounds. You know, the other thing that we, that has been a concern is how many people are buying homes as investments, right, and versus owner occupied? And so we did create a map of data from 2022, I'm sorry, 2020, that shows by city, the percentage of second homes in the city, right? So if you looked at the City of Coachella, the percentage of second homes in the city is actually pretty low at this time. And I can't read the number from here, but I think it's like 1.9%, right? So if you look, the highest numbers are really Indian Wells has a high percentage, but the other higher numbers are Palm Springs and Palm Desert. So we are still pretty low, but it is something for us to monitor because there was a concern that a lot of those homes were potentially being used as short term rentals and as second homes in the city. We did look at, a closer look at the Sevilla development by Pulte. There was a lot of, this has been the community that's been raised as the concern for short term rentals and second homes. And so we did analysis, a lot of, you know, a little bit less than half of the homes are owned by, by those that have a million dress outside the city. And then the dots reflect short term rental permits in the cities. So short term rental permits have been pulled for, you know, those homes that look to be out of city owners, but there are some in city owners that are also operating in short term rentals. Now, this isn't the most updated information because you could see the darker red reflects the homes that Pulte were, was still trying to sell, so that's probably not reflected on the county property record. But at least, at least this gives you kind of a picture of what's going on. There are quite a few of the homes that were purchased by out of town buyers. And then we did analysis of the short term rental by neighborhood concentration. So the neighborhoods that do have a higher concentration of short term rentals are La Colonia on the western side of the city, Tierra del Sol, Las Plumas, and Valencia. All those were above 16%, but La Colonia also being the highest, close to 30%. A lot of the other communities were in the single digits in the city. But there have been other cities that do regulate it by concentration, and so sometimes it's, you know, 20%. There's not a lot of communities that reach that threshold. As far as short term rental revenues, we thought this was helpful to kinda analyze and seeing what the benefits of short term rentals were to the cities in terms of revenue. So the City of Coachella, in the last fiscal year, was able to bring in $821,000. When you compare that to the other cities, it's actually considerably lower. I think Indian Wells here is shown as, as lower, $285,000. But our adjacent cities, the cities of Indio and La Quinta are pretty high, right? So the City of Indio is $8 million, and then La Quinta, $6 million. If you look at the comparison of the transit occupancy tax rate, we're at the lower, lower end, right? And then my understanding, I think Cesar was able to provide his data, said 1986, that that's when we adopted our TOT tax rate, so that was a long time ago.
What was that?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six?
Nineteen eighty-six.
Eighty-six, yeah. So that was a long time ago, so ours is 9%, but if you look at the adjacent city, Indio, it's at 13%. If you kinda observe that, being at the high end, it still hasn't stopped them from attracting hotels coming into their city. And then just here's, here's the distribution on the bar graph, just showing, you know, the last fiscal year, the revenues, and we're on the lower end. And then just looking at the bar trend, the line trends over the five year period. So obviously Palm Springs is doing really well in the short term rental revenue area, but we're on the lower end. So looking at this data and discussing this, there's more to do. The short term rental regulations aren't in the zoning code, so there isn't the direct involvement from Plan Commission in shaping like the ordinance, but there is feedback that we'd like to be able to get from the Plan Commission. So when this item does go to the City Council, that we can share your thoughts on, on this ordinance. We had mentioned to the City Council that we would like to bring some type of updated ordinance. Obviously, the Sevilla Two development became a concern for short term rentals. This would be a community that would be located on the west side of the city and a newer development, so it kinda meets those thresholds of potentially being an attractive place for short term rentals in the city. So as the task force, we're, we're looking at some potential updates that we may wanna pursue. One is increasing the permit fee for short term rentals. Right now, we only charge the business license fee. Some of the other cities charge as much as $1,700, but that also pays for some of the things that the city needs to do, right? Code enforcement, the permit process scene, also software, and we'll go into that a little bit. A lot of times, there's compliance software that the cities rely on. The next thing is a tiered fee system. So if you, you know, you have this comparison chart in front of you, so this shows you what all the cities are requiring. Some of the cities, like the City of La Quinta, have a tiered fee system that allow for a lower price for the fee for owner occupied households, but are using it for short term rentals occasionally. And then a higher fee for those that are just buying the home for that purpose. And then the next is some comprehensive regulations, so we, we think it's time to look at our regulations, make sure that they're up to date. One of the things that we noticed in the ordinance is that there is a requirement for a written agreement between the owner, the rental, and then the person that's going to rent the home. And, and I don't think we require that for every single rental, and that's probably too tedious to do that for every single short term stay in the city. Next is transit occupancy tax modifications. So looking at our tax rate, we're at 9%, which is lower than a lot of our surrounding cities. So, you know, is it time to raise that, that TOT tax rate so that it's comparable? That's not something the City Council could do, they would need to, that would need to be a vote of, of the residents of the city. And then next is stronger enforcement, so are there measures within the code that would allow for us to enforce the short term rental regulations? Now, Miguel showed a slide earlier that showed that we don't get a lot of complaints like some of the other cities, but it's always good to make sure that we have good regulations. The other is third party monitoring, and so we are looking at a third party vendor that would monitor short term rentals and how that works in other cities. They have a third party vendor that looks at the listings on the internet and to make sure that that matches up with the permities that we have in the city. And if they don't match up, then we would wanna make sure that they're in compliance and that we're also being able to collect the TOT. And then last is having a short term rental website. So currently, all the cities have a short term rental website with information about the regulations and also being able to apply for a short term rental. So we think that would be a good place to have this information on our website, and so that's, that's something that would be planned for in the future. So that's, that's the end of my staff report. You know, I just do wanna acknowledge that the Economic Development Director, Selena Jimenez, is here, and Cesar Lucrecio, who handles the permitting, just in case you have any questions of them as well.
Okay, cool question. I have a question. Seeing that we have, the table, table two reflects just the monetary trend, do we have, do we have the number for short term rentals per year as, as it's grown?
We, we probably could get that, but not, we don't have that for this presentation.
Okay, one of the things I'd like to see maybe perhaps is the average growth, right, per year? Maybe better help track how, how we should approach as far as staffing is concerned, right? If, if, if we're not really, say we have 312 applicants currently now, or 300, what did we say, 318, I'm sorry. 318, what would be, how would we use those numbers to adequately staff, right? So if we were to enter into a robust program, right, and seeing that, say for instance, we, we grown annually by a total of like a number, say 10 homes, 15 homes, 20 homes, we would need X amount of bodies to adequately staff to monitor what's going on in the city, right? One thing is dollars captured, the other thing is how many people are coming, or how many houses and or businesses are coming online annually. So one thing I'd, that would be helpful to see, right? And obviously from there, what is, what is a department or staff and or unit responsibility look like for 318 homes and or say 350 homes going forward, right? So thinking then if we're gonna grow, next year, right, we're coming on, we're at 318, what's it look, what's, what's, what does the staff look like for 325, 350, 360, 400 homes, you know, as people come, come online, right? Those are my questions for just this immediate piece here.
Along, along those lines, as Vice Chair Hernandez is sharing, I, I do know also maybe to take into consideration conglomerates that are buying houses, so if there's the same name of the, I, I do know, my, the house next door, the gentleman has verbalized that probably eight out of the houses at Tierra del Sol are his, right? They're, they're his, they're his houses. So I think there also have to be a separate tier for someone who is literally developing a capitalistic business that he has, they have the total right to develop, but I think as a city, we need to be mindful that when there is a conglomerate of buyers who are buying homes, you know, for this shared purpose, then as a city, we need to be mindful that they have to be in a different tier, right? They just have to, and I think through the legal rounds and through code, we need to find the appropriate avenues for them to know that if they're, they wanna play in the sandbox, they, they have to play with a different set of rules than a family that is just, you know, trying to rent their house for the three or four weekends of, you know, Coachella Fest and the tennis tournament, right? They're, they're just in a different type of tier. So I'm also want the city and, and the committee to be mindful of when you're getting these applications with the same name, that, you know, it should be a separate conversation or even legal, what is appropriate when someone is, you know, literally developing a business around this particular concept.
Thank you for that. I have some additional comments. Can we go back to the recommendations, please? And staff, thank you so much for this information, this is really helpful. So here, I'd like to begin with some things here. I do agree with increasing the permit fee because we need to determine what are some of those costs, going back to Commissioner Hernandez. You know, we need to determine what is that staffing ratio, what are the needs, you know, what, so we can evaluate better for growth or for decreases, you know? We don't know what the future looks like, but it's good to forecast and see how we can leverage staff or how we're gonna acquire new staff to manage this program. Second, the tiered fee system, I agree, we can definitely look into that, but I'd like to jump to the TOT, the Transit Occupancy Tax Modification. So I understand that Coachella is at 9%. I did do some research and it appears that California's at 12% as well as other cities. I know there is actually a proposed legislation from Senator Limon, SB 584, that is proposing a 15% TOT by 2025, something to look at and to consider. I think Coachella stands on its own and we can definitely have that tax. The other thing I did not notice in this presentation is the Greater Palm Springs tax, I believe is a TBID, TBID, and so I was wondering if we're considering that. I know the City of Indio has that consideration, it's a 1% tax. Again, it's the Greater Palm Springs TBID, something to consider. Talking about a webpage, I understand and I agree, but instead of a webpage, I think we can leverage the City of Coachella website and create a landing page, which is, you know, cause a website, having its own website, it's just another resource, it's just a lot of money. I think we can leverage our website, you know, have a new link at a landing page, similar to the City of Indio and Palm Springs, it's all connected together, where you can click on, and you can see all those details, like an FAQ about short term rentals in the city, what is the tax, where do you submit, you know, your payment for TOT, whether it be quarterly, monthly? I understand the City of Coachella is quarterly, some other cities are monthly, I would propose to do it monthly, cause things change. The other consideration I'd like to add to this conversation is to, part of the requirements is to have a hold harmless provision or some type of indemnification attestation or form for us, where the city is not held accountable for certain things, and I think our city attorney would agree with me, we don't have that in our requirements, we should consider that. The other thing is in insurance. These properties are businesses. We all want to be protected, I'm sure they wanna be protected, I'm confident they might have, they are required to have, insurance on the home, but we need to be careful with that. So that's another consideration in reviewing this. Lastly, let's see, what else, the landing page, oh, I love that heat map, so maybe on that landing page that we developed, we can provide that heat map because I, I liked what the City of Indio did, I think we can use them for inspiration, that we can adopt ourselves, so you can see all the STRs in the city, and then you can pinpoint. I also, what I liked about the other desert cities that they've done, a few of them, is that they have this good neighbor brochure. So I, I saw that in your chart as well, so thank you, Mr. Navarrete, for highlighting that in there. I think we can do that as well, we can talk about, hey, the City of Coachella is XYZ, if you have any complaints, any issues, you know, add that into that brochure. It's a really nice thing to have, but those are just off top, some of the things that I like to see in this. And then I understand that we don't have a cap for these short term rentals. I would open it up to the other Commissioners from some considerations on that. I, I do see that we have a hotspot, we have a like high utilization area, and that's more, I would say, towards the west side where, you know, Coachella Fest and Stage, Stage Coach occurs, but you never know with the train coming, I'm being positive here, we might have other areas, right? So some considerations, I know in the previous meeting, we proposed that the Sevilla Two property not have any short term rentals. I think that was our first case study in the community, in the City of Coachella, where no short, short term rentals would be allowed. Is that correct, Commissioner? I think that's what was-
Yeah.
-proposed?
Yeah.
For three years?
Yeah, there is some language there as well that's been adopted, that's been provided by the City Council.
Proposed, okay. So we need to consider that in the conversation, cause that's a very unique property or area or community that we kind of are using as a case study for, you know, a modest growth in, you know, STRs. That's all for me at the moment, but, oh, I did wanted to ask code enforcement. What are some adverse or complaints, adverse events or complaints that have, you know, rise from the short term rentals or during Coachella Fest or Stage Coach?
It would be noise, parking, and parking issues.
Parking issues, I, okay, thank you for that. So we all, we all knew it would be noise in parking. I would also propose a parking rule or requirement, and that would be to the bedroom, you know, one car per bedroom requirement, just similar to Palm Springs, that you do that, it's very common knowledge. So I, that's my, my proposal, my recommendation, just given that I've used Airbnbs, you know, and so I understand what that looks like, what that works like. And I think it, it brings harmony to the community because, and then you're like, okay, they're following the rules, we can co, live, coexist, you know, I live here and they're here visiting, but there's this mutual understanding. So I, having these rules is not to control or restrict usage, I think it's just to create harmony and be good neighbors, because I know we're bringing commerce into a community and that changes things a little bit. So I'm not about stagnating innovation or business or entrepreneur or making a buck or two, but I also like to be able for the communities and neighbors and families to have harmony within. So that's my, those are my recommendations.
Commissioner, can I, can I just give you some more information on something that you brought up? So you might recall, when Sevilla came through the Plan Commission, yeah, there was that requirement that was placed that limited short term rentals for a certain period of time. And the City Council did amend that condition-
Okay, perfect.
...so that if we adopted our ordinance, then it would default immediately to that ordinance and not have to wait those few years. So if there is an ordinance adopted, then they would have to comply.
Understood. Thank you so much for that clarification.
I, I do have a question, and this is more same thing with code enforcement and also related to the existing website. Do we have anywhere for residents to submit complaint forms, or is everything done through phone call or email?
Do you wanna talk about how that-
Or Renee? Hello, Members of the Commission, there is a phone number that is available for calls for service for short term rentals. We do have online, where you can report online, or you can call via phone as well, too.
What is our protocol on these phone calls? Cause I have a couple of residents that actually complained to me with, you know, with the noise factor.
Is that for short term rentals?
Yeah, short term rentals.
So for short term, we, we have no staff at, at night right now?
No, I'm saying, is it, is there a warning, then a second, a third? And then a fine after a certain amount of warnings?
Sorry to interrupt, I think your mic is off and the team is asking if you could please turn on your mic, Chair. I apologize for that interruption.
Thank you.
The other? The one in the middle.
Sorry, thank you.
So at this time, if the residents are calling the Police Department for any type of noise activity, parties, or, or any nuisance that are occurring, the Sheriff's Department is making the decision on their own to whether cite them, the occupants, or actually notify the city the next morning with the call for service log. If we get the call for service log, our code enforcement officers do issue a citation because we take the short term rentals a little bit serious because it's- because we take the short-term rentals a little bit serious, because it's taking a lot from the communities and neighbors that actually live there full-time.
So do we have any structure currently in the city where you get one warning, two warnings, three warnings? After that, there's a, there's a fine after so many warnings?
The, the fine goes automatically because when you register your property as a short-term rental, the business license department does give you the whole, uh, ordinance that's in place now.
So that's specifically for a short-term rental?
Specifically for short-term rentals. So you have all the information upfront. Uh, we as code enforcement, as the enforcement portion, we just, you know, rely on the police department, cause they're the ones that respond at night for these calls for service.
So currently then there's not, like you said, there's nothing, nobody monitoring at night? If you need to call the city right away, nobody's picking up the phone?
The, the
Cause I see some of the suggestions were to have that third-party monitoring system and stronger enforcement, so I'm guessing that's where this conversation came in?
Right. So the third-party vendor would actually collect that information, uh, collect any type of, uh, short-term rentals that are not being registered, uh, reporting purposes for city council, city staff, uh, and then collect anything, any type of monetary, uh, T O T taxes that are being collected that the city's losing out on at this time.
So when people complain, does it usually go down as a nine-one-one call or?
No, they, they call the non-emergency line. Yeah, the, the, any resident that's willing to call, uh, they do call the non-emergency line. Uh, like I said, the sheriff's department is really good about notifying us by email. We get it the next morning and then we follow up with the call for service log that sheriff's department provides us.
Thank you, Renee.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And I do have another, um, just comment. So the tiered fee system seems to be the best way, and thank you for mentioning that, to really approach the differentiating, um, homeowners from investors. Um, with that, I do see that Cat City does, um, require the property, the property to be the primary residence for folks. So taking that into consideration, if it's possible for us to incorporate that when we're talking about the tiered system, um, whether it's the fact that we continue to waive the fee, uh, for people that use that as their primary residence, and then we consider, well, how many, um, short-term rentals do these folks have, even if it is, one of them is their primary residence, right? And considering all of that, making sure that we are always prioritizing, um, local residents.
Speaking about local residents, um, I'd also like to propose that if someone's an escrow and submits an application for an S T R, that it be denied. I think they should be owners and have the deed before they submit an application for an S T R.
And then also just as an additional point, uh, to Renee, you know, um, I, I think there's value in going back to the comment the director said, that there's not as many complaints. I think as a community, um, we just, it's kind of a thing we just kind of live with, right? We just do, right? And, you know, before the boys were born, right? You know, the next door neighbor, we just lived with it, right? La banda estaba friega and we just lived with it, right? Now it's just different, right? And I think going back to the point of Director, uh, Perez saying that we, there's not a lot of reporting, I think it's just a cultural thing, right? So I think there's value, um, just like a couple of weeks ago, I received a little pamphlet for Tierra del Sol that Stephen was gonna have a meeting with the community. Something as simple as that, I think there's value in that, or even being a magnet, again, I know there's money and this and that, but I think there's value because even though I'm connected with the city and I'm very proud of being a community member and I love my city, there's still a lot of things that I don't know, right? And I think there's a lot of residents that just don't know that there's this option, right? And again, this is not about throwing people under the bus or being a, I was gonna use a ghetto word right now, but I think you think what I was thinking of, right? Is this, you know, throwing people under the bus, right? Um, but I, I think there's value in that. And I also feel that the community needs to know, um, and again, I know this is really hard to kind of figure out sometimes, but there, I, I'm, I'm also a proponent of, of tier consequences, right? Um, even as a community, we like to party, but there has to be consequences and our, our patrons need to know that if they do something like this, even if it's not a rental, cause I know you go back and ask, I appreciate you asking, cause even people that live there, then there's people that have parties, you know, every weekend, right? There, there needs to be consequences for that also, right? And whatever that might be, it is, right? But I think there's, we need to start with those rentals first. And so the city, the, the community also needs to know what those consequences are, right? That, you know, one, two, three, and then your, your license is revoked for a year, right? Or whatever, whatever we decide as a city that it makes, makes sense. So I think, uh, that's a challenge that I give to you, Renee, uh, to kind of figure that out, how that would be good, because I also feel that our community does, they just call and then cops sometimes don't come and then we just live with it, right? I, I've been told by the sheriff many times that, hey, we're gonna come if we can come, right? Thank God that they have come because they know Oscar Fonseca and they're gonna, I'll keep calling, right? I, I, they probably have me, they know my cell phone number already, right? They're like, is this guy again? Right, calling at three o'clock in the morning, right? They, they, they know me already and because that house has been an issue. But thank God, you know, the last six months it hasn't been, right? And again, we just kind of live with that. But I think there's, there's, there's value in having that type of information for our community that I think as a city, we're doing a great job informing our, our, our patrons about other opportunities, why not this, right? Cause it's, it's only gonna, it's only best to be informed.
So I have a question in regards to the T O T and the bill that, um, Commissioner Ramirez brought up. So maybe perhaps the legal can clarify the bill, um, and when it's gonna be taking place?
So I'm not familiar with the bill, but, um, if it's something that's being proposed, it would still have to go through the legislative process. Um, usually the legislator is in a two-year session.
Right.
And I think right now it's on its first year of a two-year session. So I think that if it's going through the legislative process, they'll, um, I'm not sure, it would, um, it, it would continue until next year.
Right. So it's, if it, so she wants to propose it in twenty twenty-five, right? So obviously, the earliest, maybe perhaps that's, that's a deal that they're gonna have to strike in Sacramento.
Correct.
So probably twenty-six or, and or twenty-seven, when the bill would get, you know, be implemented.
Twenty-seven implemented.
And it's fifteen percent, you say?
Fifteen percent.
Yeah. So, Commissioner, I just wanted to offer, just offer a little, um, um, information. So staff understands that the bill is proposing to, uh, add an additional fifteen percent to the twelve percent.
Oh.
That's what it is.
On top of the twelve?
On top of the twelve percent, so.
So is there any consideration from our staff of what, what you guys are recommending?
No, so, okay, just to clarify. So they're, they're looking at around capturing thirty percent of T O T.
To increase, yeah.
And so is all that money, is, is staying locally?
It, no, it's actually going to, uh, for the development of affordable housing.
Throughout the state?
Throughout the state.
And so how much, oh, so fifteen percent the state is taking?
Is taking, yeah. So Caesar is, uh, actually our expert on that. Um, do you want to come up, Caesar, and just offer more insight?
So this is not, this is
This is different.
Oh, so this is not gonna benefit locally?
No.
Yeah, good, good afternoon, uh, commissioners. Yeah, so right now we have the nine percent T O T tax. So if the, if it passes, the bill passes, they'll add the other fifteen percent. So whoever, like say if you rent it, you'll pay the, uh, twenty-four percent T O T tax.
Exactly.
Yeah, so the state will keep fifteen and then the, the city will keep the nine percent.
Without consideration for tiering or anything, right?
Yeah, so, so say, I don't know, uh, San Diego might have, what, thirteen, fourteen percent T O T tax?
Yeah.
So they'll be paying, whoever rents it, they'll be paying like, uh, the twenty-nine percent.
So what's the speculation? Does it look like it has broad support across the legislation?
No, it hasn't.
Yeah, no, I think they tabled it, um, for right now, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
It's a consideration, too.
So, so I don't, like, a lot of
Keep an eye out on that.
Yeah, yes.
That's why I brought it up.
Legislative's update, so I know, um, Airbnb and all the other, I know they're fighting it, so, you know, they got their own obvious.
So what, what's the earliest we can have a ballot initiative here in the City of Coachella? Are we looking at the pre? March?
Thank you.
March twenty twenty-four? Do we have an idea of what, what that number looks like? If we were to propose a T O T increase in the city, do we have that number?
Twelve is, twelve percent is average, you say?
Probably twelve percent, right, GP? I think, uh, that was what our city manager was hoping for, to at least come up to twelve percent, if not thirteen percent. You know, because it, it, the standard by now is twelve percent across California and, um, and we're one of the lowest and we don't even have a hotel in our city, but, yeah. And so, so we're hoping, I think, I thought, I thought we talked about thirteen percent potentially, but again, you know, uh, you know, we'd have to have all kinds of workshops and just to get, you know, public support and opinion.
Two, twelve percent is where it's, and so how fast, how confident do you feel you can mobilize to get a ballot initiative?
You know, um, uh, it's gonna take a lot. I, I, I think we felt pretty confident. We thought we could, I mean, if we have everyone's support, then, you know, we could, but, um, I mean, we don't have a hotel in our city, but we do have the short-term rentals and so it's something to think about.
Yeah, there's obviously dollars there, right? That can be potentially captured, seeing that we haven't had a, an increase since nineteen eighty-six, right? So I think that there, there, there's dollars left on the table there.
Absolutely.
I, I would, I would like strongly suggest that we maybe look at something a little higher than, than the average in California, only because we, we, we do live, uh, we are a vacation destination, right? Obviously.
Thirteen, thirteen is higher than twelve?
I like fourteen, you know what I mean? I, even I like fifteen, you know what I mean? Just like, I like, I like, uh, working in, in odd numbers for, uh, for some reason. I really don't care for even, but, uh, um, yeah, if we, if we look, obviously where we look, where we live, um, it's a vacation destination, right? And obviously, we, we haven't moved, um, this number since nineteen eighty-six. So might as well, you know, go after something that is really not gonna, um, hinder and not gonna impact the local resident, right? Or it's gonna be, it's gonna, this is somebody else's money, not the local resident's, right? Yeah, it's tourists, right? And they're, they're already coming and they're already here, right? And they're already looking. Um, and so that's something that I, I would, you know, strongly suggest that we look at, maybe fifteen percent, um, going in that direction, right? And, you know, having the, the, the necessary workshops to, to get this done and, and get it on the ballot by March.
I second that, yeah, between thirteen and fifteen, I would say as well.
So along, along the question that you just suggested about the community getting behind something like this, I don't know if it's appropriate, but I'm gonna go ahead and ask it. So the money that is generated, that that go to a general pot and is used for salaries? I mean, what is that money, what is that a hundred and twenty, is it earmarked for anything? Cause I think the community would be open, you know, to grow that if, you know, it's gonna go, like for me, as a father, again, biasedly, right? I'm just being honest by, by myself. It's like, if you tell me it's gonna improve our schools, you know, this or that, or our community, or whatever that might be, I think there's, there's value in, in our community to know where, where that money could be earmarked. I'm not saying the whole thing, but I'd say, you know, twenty percent of this funding or twenty-five percent of this funding is gonna be earmarked for this or for that, or I, I, one of the things that I kept on saying, I was talking to, to our, our council here this, this, uh, this afternoon is, uh, a lot of our students are also, you know, I'm a career counselor at the university, right? And so I'm always looking for ways of our students to enhance their experience, right? And so, you know, I know C V High now would, they have aviation, this and that, but it's a cluster, right? So what if all students can be engaged, right? If all students can learn a little bit about agriculture, hospitality, you know, the industries that we have here locally in our cities, so that we're growing our own workforce, right? And so why can't we be part of that cutting edge, right? Yeah, is it a juggernaut? Is it something that's gonna be worked, this and that? Yes, we're all gonna say about work, but if we're working together to establish some of this funding, to establish some of this connectiveness, uh, and how we're growing our own industry, I think our, our families will be more than willing, uh, to, to, to support something like that.
Well, I have some good news for you. Um, since he mentioned, you know, he would like to see workforce development opportunities and just like, you know, jobs, job development, we actually are going to be the recipients of twenty-two point one-two-five million dollars through the transformative climate communities program. And so we do have some workforce initiatives, so we, we're gonna be creating, um, our own, you know, green jobs and all that good stuff. So HVAC technicians, the electricians, these are high-paying positions that pay at least fifty dollars an hour once you, you know, graduate and get the apprenticeships and all that good stuff, solar installations, uh, including, um, training, uh, for our youth. So, so our, um, you know, initiative that we got funded is gonna include not just, you know, the adults, but also our young people. And so they're all going to be trained in green jobs of the future, so we're really, really excited about that. Uh, the Strategic Growth Council will make us hold through another initiative, so we, we will actually receive twenty-nine point five million dollars. Uh, so seven point three seven five will be through another, um, initiative that they have. And so, so really, we're gonna, uh, Coachella Prospera was funded, so I'm very proud of that and I just want to tell you that because if you recall, we had some conversations in the previous meeting, uh, we talked about, you know, um, what are we doing about displacement avoidance and things like that? So now that's gonna get funded, so we will have a displacement, displacement avoidance plan that will be integrated across all of our strategies and it's gonna include, you know, our planning commissioners, city council, other stakeholders and the community to come together and, and, and basically, you know, form these plans, cause we have several that we're implementing and the displacement avoidance plan is just one of them. But we have community engagement, displacement, a data tracking and indicator, uh, collection program, so that's gonna be tracking all metrics and progress across all of our plans and projects and so much more. It's like so many things and we're just so incredibly proud, uh, cause, uh, that was a big win for us and, uh, you know, there's gonna be, um, there were six applications submitted. When people started out, there were actually like twenty-five people that were interested and said they were gonna submit and just as time went by, they were like, oh no, this is difficult, we can't do this. We only ended up with six applications, uh, uh, ours being one of them, so we're really, really happy that we were selected. We ranked number two, just so you know, so should something happen, we're number two, we're not gonna be number four.
Awesome.
Good job, Stephen. Thank you for, your great work, your staff also.
Thank you.
Have, have a question, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
So the money that, uh, this specific money, is that entitled money or does it go to the general fund?
You know what? It's gonna come to us.
No, I'm talking about the
The, oh, the T O T thing?
The T O T.
Okay, sorry. Uh, I think right now it's in the general fund, but, but it all has like, you know, like breakouts, like how he was mentioning. I'd like to see, you know, a benefit here or there and then
Yeah, entitled money.
Yeah, so, so there, yeah, so it, yeah, it comes back to the community.
So one of, one of the things that if, I, I wouldn't like to see, uh, the increase, right? Or the, the profits gained from this increase, not earmarked, just only, I would like to see it go to the department. You know, one of the things that I want, um, is to make sure that we, we profit, properly fund staff to be able to do the job that needs to do, to be able to capture potentially each and every dollar that we've lost from the past five years, right? Um, you know, granted, you know, yes, we do have, um, people, we, we have three hundred and twelve, um, you know, current, um, applicants or licenses issued given, right? But we don't, we don't know how many people are not, you know, applying for, you know, permits, right, et cetera. So I would like to see the dollars, um, actually go back into the actual department, so we can beef up the department, staff the department adequately, adequately, and then even revisit this maybe in two to three years' time, right? When we see the trends even in, increase, right? Because obviously, um, since twenty nineteen, there's been exponential growth, right? And so meaning that people are coming online all the time, right? And what we are not doing is properly monitoring, right? And so we gotta, we, we gotta, we gotta find a way, uh, to catch up, right? And if the tax increase is only maybe a Band-Aid, right? Yeah, because we're only capturing money off these 312 or 318, right? Pretty much is what we're doing. But what we're not doing is monitoring, right? So we're not monitoring how many actual Airbnbs or actual applicants or people, like it might be 400, right, annually or whatever? I don't know. But because we don't have, you know, the department adequately staffed, but we're not able to actually reconcile properly, right? So that's one of the things that I like to see, right? That the money stay within the department adequately staffed. And maybe perhaps we revisit this, you know, two years, three years, four years, five years down the line where we can reconcile all the numbers and look at our margins and say, okay, what can we do with this money as now this pot has grown, right? So those are my comments.
I just wanted to add that we will be looking at, we did request price quotes from five different vendors that offer the monitoring and tracking services. So we will be receiving three demonstrations to kind of like, you know, just see, to compare and contrast and see who would be the best deal. Because that's something we want to do here. The other thing that city staff is working on is to getting our software. We call it the permit tracker system, but really it's actually a system that integrates all of the departments in the city of Coachella so that we are better able to process, you know, anything, you know, whether it's, you know, a CUP or some garage sale application or whatever. So all, the entire spectrum. And so we're looking at having that platform also integrate with our financial system that we use right now and also so that we have like online payments and all this good stuff. So it's supposed to be like a full integration. So just pardon us, it's taking us a little minute because it's not that easy to, you know, transition from the system we're using now to this new system, you know, because you have to change all kinds of things and integrate everything. So so far, we were able to get Blue Beam, which is a plan review system. So we are having that paid for. And, but once we get these demonstrations that Caesar has arranged for, then we will be able to, I think, you know, make some headway. And then we also signed ourselves up for additional RGIS ESRI stuff. So basically, we'll be able to look at these heat maps and, you know, create all kinds of information, extract that data because ESRI gives you excellent data access. And so we're going to be working closely with development services and, you know, again, working together. It's just, it takes a minute and I've been really, really busy, so I apologize. But we are getting there and so 2024 is going to be a smash year where we make some great strides. But so thank you guys for giving us your feedback and support.
Would you be able to speak on that 1% that I mentioned for the TBID?
Oh, yeah, so that, I know it's a tourist improvement district and so.
Is that something that we classify? We can adopt and have?
Those are kind of tough. They're almost like, if you've ever heard of EIFD, the, it's like an improvement, like it's basically, we're asking our residents to tax themselves or, you know, to, so that we have that money to improve those tourist areas or what have you. And so traditionally, the city of Coachella has not considered those just because we already feel that, you know, some of our residents are already paying enough and, you know, you know how it is. And so we, but it's definitely something we can just kind of explore and look into if you'd like and just to kind of bring it back and see what that looks like. But I do know that it's a little hard on people because I, I don't know if you guys noticed that the county put out a Eastern Coachella Prospera, EIFD proposal and they used our Coachella Prospera name. I was like, what? Anyway, and so they put that, put it out there and, you know, and just had that campaign going. And so they were able to get that established. And so that's for infrastructure improvements in the unincorporated rural communities of Eastern Coachella Valley. So, but, you know, people will be taxed, so anyway.
I had to ask.
Chair, can we, we have a public hearing item on the regular agenda, so we should.
Just real quick, Caesar, I just want to bring this up because we are getting over time, but there was someone that had some public comment that Caesar informed me about. So if you want to hear that, let me know, but you don't have to. It is a study session.